Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to it being 6:30 PM. Welcome to the Wednesday, August 11, 2021, meeting of the Westminster Select Board. I will now, all members currently, before calling to order, Toby Young is not present. However, we are fortunate to have Sue Harlow present from vacation. And thank you for doing that, Sue. Therefore, I will now call the meeting, call the meeting to order. Adjustments to the agenda?
I have none.
Seeing no adjustments to the agenda, I will now move for the acceptance of the minutes for the July 28 meeting.
I will move the acceptance of the minutes as per.
Motion to accept the minutes for the July 28 meeting of the Westminster Select Board has been moved. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Sue. All those opposed? None. The minutes of July 28, 2021 are hereby adopted.
Kevin, in the absence of Susan, could you please sign the minutes?
Yes, I will do that, absolutely.
Thank you.
You're welcome to. Thank you. And now move to the acceptance of the July 30 meeting of the Westminster Select Board.
I'll move that we approve the minutes of the July 30 special warning meeting as per.
So moves. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion to approve the meetings, the special meeting of the Select Board of July 30, 2021 have been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seeing no opposition, the minutes of July 30 are adopted. I will now entertain a motion for the adoption of the minutes of the Westminster Select Board for August 2, 2021.
Well, I move that we approve the minutes for the special warning meeting on August 2.
So move. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion to accept the minutes of the Westminster Select Board for August 2, 2021 have been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing no one in opposition, the minutes for August 2, 2021 are hereby adopted. I will now move to communications and public comments. The crowd board, anyone, anyone online within the public communication? Is there anyone there?
Yeah, Kevin, you can look right into that and.
Oh, okay, sorry.
There's Alice, Fernand, and Susan.
Fran.
Yeah, Susan.
Okay. Susan, any comment? Concerns? None. Seeing no public comments or communications? Thank you. We'll now move on to unfinished business, discussion in action, starting with the American Rescue Plan Act, the ARCA COVID Local Recovery Funds, the update.
In your packet, you have the verification in the portal that we did receive the first half of the towns portion, which is $141,380.81. And we also received the villages half for $14,080.50. So they have been notified also. And you're looking at this document right here, and the numbers are on the back.
Okay.
So in the Gazette, I will definitely start posting for committees to be set up.
Any other further specifics, Russ, that you want to add?
At this time, they have not given us any updates of how to spend the money. I'm sure they'll be coming down the pike, but Wyndham County is licking their wounds from the storm, so they're going to have to take a minute or two for them to get their act together to get us that information, I'm sure. So there's not a wicked rush, but, you know, it'll come fast once it comes, so we'll keep working on it.
Thank you for all your effort. Any comments from the board?
That's good. That's a good thing.
Comments from the general public? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to Hartley Hill Road, private section update, if any?
There is no update. Legal counsel was still working on it.
Okay. Any comments, board, public? Seeing none, thank you, sir. Moving on to website, or no update, if any?
This is, hi Kevin, this is Susan. I have not heard from Russ Lazaric in the last week or so, so I'm not quite sure where we are, but I'll try to follow up when I get back.
Okay, thank you, Sue. Any other comments? Seeing none. Moving on to the Collaborate Finance Processing Manual update, if any?
There isn't any. Paul has been busy with, again, the storms, et cetera. We'll harness him down when he gets back for some more updates.
Terrific. Okay, any comments from the public? Thank you, seeing none. Now moving on to new business discussion in action. We are referring this now to the 7/29/21 storm, which would be July 29, 2021, storm emergency and finance.
Emergency financing, you folks at your special meeting requested a line of credit, so I put it out to bid. I had three bidders. Today, I got an update from Mascoma Bank to make it a 1% 12 months with no payments. Community Bank came in at 1.56% payments due monthly on the amount used. And Savings Bank of Waukun truly did not interested and stated that 3.25% would be the only thing that he could come up with. So I've talked to Paul and myself and the office and with the history of Mascoma with the town and our office, we would recommend Mascoma Bank, who happens to be low anyway.
Thank you, sir. Comments from the board?
I think it's a great deal, plus we don't even have to make, basically what they're saying, we borrow the money, then when we get the money, we can either pay it down or pay it off.
That's correct.
So there's no structure payment, which would be easier, so we can go along and accumulate from the side of what we're going to do easier. And I need a motion?
I absolutely do.
I always want to get the comments first. This is a ready-made comment, but yes, thank you.
Well, technically, if both have a motion, they have a discussion on it.
Okay, my apologies.
Well, I'll move that we approve the line of credit for Mascoma Bank for up to $500,000 for the use of emergency funds for the storm.
Susan wants to come on.
Sue? Yes, Sue Harlow.
I was just going to second that, Craig. Yeah, I'm going to second that, Craig.
Motion to accept the line of credit as submitted from Mascoma Bank has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
That's quite all. And the fact is pointing out the facts. And all those opposed? None. Seeing none, the line of credit from Mascoma Bank is so adopted.
Just an FYI, we have to date bills in our possession of $150,414.94.
Storm related.
Storm related.
Do you need a motion for signature on this loan as we spied it out, or do the town treasurer just authorize?
The town treasurer is authorized to go ahead and do it.
So we need no further administrative movement?
That's correct.
Okay.
I think we should, as a board, thank Mascoma Bank, because that's a good deal. We appreciate it.
I think, I would echo that. I think that is a tremendous thing and wonderful execution for the town. It really is wonderful.
Wow, it really is.
Thank you to Mascoma Bank. Anything else on that?
No.
Okay. Moving on, new business discussion, action B, 7/29/21 storm, process and format.
Well, in your packet, you have a letter that I'm creating as we go through each project. But why that's on there is that we are in, we have not been declared an emergency state of Vermont from FEMA yet. Today, I received a great deal of information, request for information from FEMA. We had already done the lion's share, so it was relatively easy to compile it and send it out. They only were interested in just the bigger items. There was six of them, different hills. So that, anyway, that's what we're going to get. We're going to get little tidbits of information, because this is going to be done virtual. They're not going, FEMA is not coming to town Westminster nor Wyndham County. They're going to do it by communication through pictures and emails, et cetera. We haven't seen it yet, but Bucky Adams has actually got a droid that he's flown over the, one of the projects that was in question and.
He was supposed to email you that today. You did not receive that?
No, I didn't, so.
I will make sure he helps you.
Yeah, so anyway, that would have been really handy to send off to him, because that really would be, pictures, you know, you can take them and you try to get them so that, you know, you've got something to compare, because you can't really see how deep ravines are and washouts until somebody stands beside it or you've got something to look at. So pictures are tough, so this is going to be a relatively interesting process. I'm not warm and fuzzy about it yet, so we'll see. We'll see how it goes.
Yeah, I was on the call and with you, and I corroborated back what you said and just kind of just surprised, not knowing the process though, that they were not going to physically come down and take a look at what they were supposed to look at.
Yeah.
So I was on the call, and I know Sue Harlow was also on the call, and I can't speak for her. Sue, did you want to comment on that at all?
Yeah, she's on.
Yeah, I have a question, which is, there's not really a possibility that we won't be declared an emergency, is there?
There always is.
Hmm, okay.
They won't make up their mind until they are, it's proven that we have enough damage, and they're only truly looking at four towns right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment at all, Russ?
I have nothing.
You know, way down the road, long term, be interested to compare this storm to Irene's storm to see if the places that we did repair actually held up well for this one, or is it the same place that we keep constantly have a problem with flood, or is it new places that have, in other words, you fixed one place, now it's another place? So this has nothing we need to do today or even the next few weeks, although it would be kind of interesting if we get all done down the road. We went through two storms, it was the same corner, it's been washed out every time. We don't have a long-term plan.
I wasn't here during Irene, but it's my understanding that there's more widespread damage through this storm than there was Irene. Irene, you have big ticket items, bridges, Big Bang, Sunlong, Cover Bridge Road, and down by James, dig.
Yeah. We had more damage from trees being washed down through Saxon River, wiping out part of the bridges and doing damage like that. There was more severe damage from the river. This one seemed like more damage.
There was a lot of flash flooding coming down off the hills and plugging up culverts. There wasn't so much ditch material that was going in. It was just like blowing down out of the hills, taking leaves and debris of pine needles and sticks and whatever, trimming them into culverts and blow over the top. And then we had, like, the Higbee Road Bridge is not flooded. It just couldn't take the water. So there's a lot of that, too.
Can I answer your question a little bit? A brook is a brook, so, you know, literally, what flooded the first time without much water, flooded again. So they're roughly the same spots.
I have seen.
And more, as Chuck said, there's.
But I didn't see that actually, the storm, the Saxon River and some of the other streams actually, 2011 helped it because it widened the river and everything and took these streams out, but this time it did less damage. But this time it was more damage, like you said, coming off just the road, not a big washout, but just like Higbee Road, just couldn't handle how fast it came out.
I don't know, being in the hill yesterday, and there's sections through the woods where there's no litter at all. The water just took everything right with it. I mean, just dirt is left, and it doesn't take much to plug a culvert up and then over and go. The storm track hit for two, though, didn't it? Because then Irene hit west, west more. We had other sides. More people hit, so the rivers couldn't handle it. The mountains came down, the mountains, you know, so it was more devastating. This was more like Westminster that hit with a lot of rain.
They were trying, FEMA was trying to tell me that it was, what part of town did it hit? And I kept saying, yeah, it was not just a section of town, it was the town.
It's like, for instance, picture of Irene, clearly even came up with it halfway through the day. This time, obviously, we all know what happened, but I mean, if I say I think Irene was more to the west, and, I mean, yes, it flooded the Saxon River at places, but I think as far as the roads and so on, it was further to the west, so it's kind of not comparable from that standpoint.
They said, when I was talking to these towns around us, I talked to Jeff, they said really, there was no signs of a, to get a plug in Valley Road. It was Plug and Valley Road, that's not much, really.
It was pretty localized, but I feel as a community, we need to, like I say, vigil against this is going to happen again, and we're going to see more and more of this. Go on whatever you want. Fight the change, go for war, I don't care where you go, but we're seeing more and more of it. So Crafton's been hit, what, three or four times this way? So they're just, they're luckier than they are, I guess. Yeah, if this storm had been hit in springtime, no, if this storm had hit in October, what would we do? We got time enough now to get this back together before we got a lot of snow. Can you imagine trying to plug these roads right now? What else?
Before the line prioritization, which is obviously going to be short of being this evening, I'd be wanting, on behalf of the board, thank Russell Hodge, who's our town manager, and everyone over there for their immediate diligent response, Chuck Lawrence and the entire highway crew, our own Jason Perry, Ed Moffett is here, everyone, and everyone who's not here, whatever, who contributed to get the road open, roads open immediately, and every member of the fire department, you guys and everything that you did and do for us. Apparently, this was a hands-on deck, no one was harmed significantly that we're aware of, and the roads were open relatively quickly, thanks to the leadership of all those mentioned and others, the people in the community that came out and showed their concern. I just wanted to make sure that that was out there, because I know a lot of people, for me, it was a learning experience, and those, all the folks I mentioned helped me learn a lot about what goes on out there. And thank you all for what you have done, that nobody was hurt, and that we were able to get folks out, and it's really an incredible job by everyone. Thank you.
No, I agree. Thank you. The amount of time that everybody had to work, especially right in the middle of the summertime, we're asking you to do a lot, you know, so thank you very much.
And as Chuck and Russ and Jason and others have mentioned, this also highlights, you know, the times have changed, it also shows that, you know, we've got some structures, right? We have infrastructure that needs attending to, prioritization, that kind of shows it, and our protocols that we can strengthen and get better, and with the team we have in place now, as a taxpayer, I'm just saying, with all the folks I mentioned, I think we have a good chance of being very successful at that, and I'm looking forward to hearing the prioritizations and hopefully doing what we can to pitch in and make sure we help out with getting the financing necessary to make sure we get this done in a timely and effective manner to meet the timeline, especially against the weather and the coming change of season. But again, thank you to everybody. Any further, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think, I've already mentioned it to you and Chuck personally, but the work that you've already done prior to this storm saved a lot of roads, it saved a lot of damage that would have happened had it not been fixed and done. And once all of this is taken care of, the roads are back in shape and don't need to continue, because like he said, that, you know, these storms are going to continue to come and whatnot, so.
Thank you.
Kudos to everybody that's doing the work, and it's good foresight, but that needs to continue in the future as well.
Thank you, Mr. Ben Moffett, and I guess the discussion over recent ditching that has been done by the crew and Chuck, getting the ditching in place, and again, for someone like me, not really sure, and then finally learning the importance of how that kind of works. Thanks to all, because again, that made it, as you said, more manageable and put us in a much stronger position to not only fix and respond, but recover. So thank you very much for bringing that up. Are there any additional comments at this point with process and formatting as we move forward on the 7/29/21 storm?
There's some spelling errors in this, I don't know if that matters or not, but savage, savage, not salvage. Where are you? Anywhere.
Oh, in the letter?
Right in the, yeah, the 7/30 thing. I don't know if it makes a bit of difference, but you got one initial, two many down at the bottom.
It's not salvage, stab it.
I wasn't in New Hampshire, I was here. I think you're talking about my brother. A third of the way up from the bottom.
I was wondering about Paul.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a big deal, but if it needed to be corrected.
Oh, sorry.
I'll let you live this time.
Well, just J, B, just Jake.
I mean, just scanning through, and I think that's all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. Moving on to Chuck Purchase, financing discussion.
You wanted it on there. I think it's, at this point, I would like to table it. We haven't gotten to a point where we can even start talking about that yet.
Got it.
Split out one fire before we start another.
Sure.
So we have some time.
Okay, very good. We will table the Chuck Purchase finance discussion. Fuel bid results.
In your packet, we have four bids, Dead River, HB, Allen Brothers and Bart. Dead River will not lock in a rate. They insist on using the variable format, and that's not, that's not our policy to use. HB Energy is not going to supply number two fuel or off-road, but they have a great rate for our propane, as they typically do, and they're very interested in keeping it, which they are a little bitter at $1.92. Allen Brothers and Bart are interested in the number two and off-road. Allen Brothers is just a smidge over Byron Industries. Both are at fixed rate, both are good companies. So this is, this is totally up to you guys, what you want to do for this.
When you put this out, does it go out just in the paper and it's up to the contract, up to them to respond to you?
We send out, we send out seven, we sent out seven letters to all the neighborhood people, Irving, to Coda and Coda, to.
I was just looking.
And then we put it out in the newspaper also, so that you can get, you know, if somebody else wants to travel to us. So we, we do our diligence on that part for this fuel bid.
It's just always surprising that.
Big deal.
Tell them, Jane, local, close by, that they don't even respond.
They, they used to, and they were so high, and they won't, they won't manage any accounts until you really buy everything you got from them. So it's tough, and Irving can't compete. They don't, they don't want to.
You're also asking walk-in price.
Yeah, right.
Everybody can give you a price. When you ask for walk-in, a different, it really is how they bought your future and what's going on and, you know, and what you ask.
Allen Brothers.
I just want to question, who is the incumbent for propane?
HB.
HB is the propane.
Is it just this building that have propane? This building, the firehouse? This building and the firehouse is on their own, so it's just this building, all of this.
I will entertain a motion, and you need this right now, right?
Yes, we'd like to lock in these.
Sue will need you to be present. Are you there?
I am here, yep. Do you want me to make the motion or just to vote?
We will need a motion, please, on the number two, for the contract for number two fuel and off-road fuel.
Right.
2022.
So I can, I'll move that we accept the bid from Bart Energy, yes, for number two fuel at 2.5 and off-road fuel at 2.59, I think. Yes, is that adequate?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Do you want me to also make the motion for Dead River? No, HB.
For the propane?
In a minute.
Yeah, okay.
In a second. Okay, I have a motion for Bart Energy to be utilized as the primary contractor for number two fuel and off-road fuel for 2022. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
That has been seconded?
Can I ask a question?
Sure, by all means, recognize Craig Allen.
Byron Energy did it, did they think that they're bidding all three, or they're bidding each one separate?
They're bidding each one separate.
Okay, motion has been moved and seconded with Craig Allen present, but recusing. All those in favor of Bart Energy for the 2022 fuel bid, number two fuel off-road, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Bart Energy is adopted. I will now entertain a motion for the 2022 fuel bid contract for propane.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Sue.
I will be accept the bid from HB Energy Solutions for propane fuel at 1.92.
Thank you, Sue. Motion has been made to accept HB Energy Solutions at 1.92 for the propane contract 2022. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Craig, you take the first place in this vote. All those in favor of adopting HB Energy's solutions for the propane contract 2022, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? HB Energy Solutions is hereby adopted, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to unleaded gasoline delivery.
This hasn't been bid out very often because the carriers are few and far between. Burrows has been doing it for years and no longer. Burrows has been doing it for years and are no longer going to be delivering gasoline. So Chuck solicited bids and from Coda and Coda and Swansea Oil, and the bids are on.
I called several, but those are the only ones that actually do it, so.
Okay. Okay, does everyone, everyone obviously sees the, who currently is doing it?
Burrows.
But there, stop it.
That's correct.
They're already doing it.
Okay, so that leaves us with Coda and Coda and Swansea Oil. Any discussion here?
Coda and Coda is local.
And it's so close, it's not funny. I mean, that's pennies.
So I think it's gonna be, they gotta, they have to, I don't know if they gotta come and inspect the tank, but that is a good question.
There's a, there's a lengthy process, like you said before. I talked to them about you getting an account there. They'd much rather you buy everything from them before they deal with us. And so that might be diesel fuel and
But that's not So this number is no good.
Well, I'm just, I'm just talking, well, this is what they told me. So this is the number, this is what gas costs there, but there is a process. So I'm just letting you know. That's what they told me.
May I ask, relying on your expertise, do you, is there a similar process with Swansea Oil?
There's no process.
So is it fair to say that the one penny differential with Swansea Oil, we're not gonna come through this potentially higher cost, Coda and Coda?
We, I'm like the castle, how much do we use?
Can't be much.
Well, I see the fire department is more like it. Well, that's what I can think of.
So, yes.
If we didn't have the fire department, which there's the ones using it, we'd be down to
Oh, yeah, well, I don't use anywhere near what the fire department does. But in a situation like we've had recently, if something happened that, I don't know, the Connecticut River Valley flooded, we couldn't get gasoline, we got other problems, is that that? Well, maybe, but we ought to think about that as far as our emergency management system works. If your highway department couldn't get gas, your fire department couldn't get gas, the people that worked for all your infrastructure couldn't get gasoline for whatever reason, things would be kind of screwed up.
Did the tank up there?
Thousand gallons.
Could cost us a lot of money when that thing goes up.
What's that?
And that tank has to be funded and pulled.
Well, that's what we're talking about now, as far as our capital. But, you know, in the future, getting, one of the things I'd like to do is I recommend you get those tanks out of the ground soon before they become a problem. And it's even, before it's an emergency.
You got enough gas stations from here and your pantry, you can go get, like, twenty-five hours, seven.
Well, I know, but I know other towns that do that, but it's not, it's already now, it's not a good idea. Because what happens when the power goes out? I've got a generator.
Now you're talking about pretty, you're being pretty pessimistic, Chuck, about it. The chance that all those gas stations
We gave a lot of money and weight, Craig, thinking that we'd never have a storm like this, but look at where we are right now.
No, but I'm just saying, having diesel fuel is one thing, having gas is totally different. That's why, so everybody's getting out of it. The liability insurance is ridiculous. And to me, this is so convenient, yeah. Usually really inconvenient to get off-road fuel, no question about it. And we use so much.
No, that's up to you guys. I mean, obviously, it's your decision.
If we got, if we got rid of that tank, which doesn't have to do with this, but if we got rid of that tank there, let's just say the firehouse couldn't have a 500 gallon above-ground tank.
They've talked about it.
When I'm in You know what I mean? I don't know either. I'm just thinking out loud, you know what I mean?
Okay, any additional discussion on this matter? Discuss that Coda and Coda is the local team, however, there is the
It's not written there, that's why I question, but I don't disagree with what you're saying if you dealt with. But it's hard because Coda and here, Swansea isn't here to tell you. All I can tell you is the other people have, somebody has to serve you, work on your furnace. And so we've had to switch oil companies, but this one here, there's no service. It's just a tank in the ground and he has to take care of it, so. Pretty simple. You need, there's no service to it. And they either come put gas in it or no.
Right.
Swansea Oil, the last truck around is that big, long, double tanker that goes around to little tiny gas station, but they're all closing up.
Probably go to, they go to